Good evening, welcome to the Townsboro Hills Road Planning Board Public Meeting for February 4th, 2016, and Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, Sunshine Law. Roll call, please.
Mr. Peason?
Here.
Mr. Hestad?
Here.
Mr. Julian?
Here.
Mr. Canard?
Here.
Mr. Searachy?
Here.
Mr. Delcor?
Here.
Dr. Maruli?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Ms. Baccarena?
Here.
And Ms. Forrest?
Here.
And Chairman Lepanti?
Here. Before we start the meeting tonight, I'd like to take a moment to remember a board member who has since left us. Michael Murringer passed away this past January, complications of cancer. Michael Murringer served Hillsborough Township in many capacities through the years, including as mayor and various other boards, and he served as a member of the planning board for 23 of the past 37 years. He passed away January 18th. Families requesting, is what I recall, in lieu of flowers, that he make donations to fire company number?
One.
One, in his memory. So, he had many other roles with this town, but for this particular board, he was a fixture, and we will miss him greatly, and I'd like to observe a moment of silence in his honor. Thank you very much. In your packet, we have a disposition of minutes, I believe.
No minutes.
No minutes. So, we have no minutes to go through. All right, we have resolutions. One for KDC Solar GRO LLC, known as Gibraltar Quarry KDC Solar, File 12 PB01SR.
Mr. Chairman, the eligible members to vote on this resolution are yourself, Mr. Connor, Mr. Wagner, Vice Chairman, Dr. Maruli, and Mayor Delcor.
Roll call, please.
Motion.
Oh, sorry, motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Roll call.
Mayor Delcor?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Maruli?
Yes.
Mr. Con- Canard?
Yes.
Chairman Lepanti?
Next deposition we have for William Hanley, Haney, excuse me, File 15 PB12 MRV.
The eligible members, Mr. Chairman or yourself, Mr. Wagner, Mr. Peason, Mr. Julian, and Dr. Maruli.
Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Got it, just make sure you're keeping up.
Yeah.
Roll call.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Dr. Maruli?
Yes.
Mr. Julian?
Yes.
Chairman Lepanti?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next planning board business is a grant or a request for extension of time by Glenn Gary GGRE Company with the extension through February 31st of 2016.
March.
Oh, excuse me, March 31st of 2016.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, for the record, I spoke to Mr. Mamora, who's the attorney for Glenn Gary, earlier in the week. He indicated to granting of this extension, and he was planning on sitting down with Mr. Maskey in the very near future to discuss the ongoing nature of this application.
Yeah, I spoke with Mr. Mamora today. We will set up a meeting for next week, and according to him, it is their intention to move the application forward for a minor subdivision. So, I'll know before the next meeting certainly what their intentions are.
Okay. We have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Second, and roll call.
Uh, Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Hestad?
Yes.
Mr. Julian?
Yes.
Mr. Canard?
Yes.
Mr. Searachy?
Yes.
Mr. Delcor?
Yes.
Dr. Maruli?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Uh, do I call the alternates on this too?
No.
No, okay, and Chairman Lepanti?
Yes. Special committee reports, seeing none. Any business from the floor not on the agenda today from the public? Public just said no, seeing none.
There's only one.
Only one, as usual. You were late. All right, any, no consideration of ordinances that I can see?
Mr. Chairman, sorry, if I might backtrack in one second on the, on the Haney-ish resolution. I know when they were here, on the item 13, there was a couple of, um, there was a couple of people concerned about the eagles, and the applicant had, um, we had talked about them running the GIS layer, making sure that there was not any endangered species identified on the GIS la- layer on the DEP map, so I know that was part of that discussion.
I recall that.
It's not in the resolution, but just for the record.
Well, I think on there, in, on that same page C, the applicant shall provide as a condition of a building permit information to the township as to the bald eagle habitat within the property boundaries in accordance with the requirements of the New Jersey DEP.
Okay, then that's good.
All right, we got, we covered that?
We, we try, Mr. Chairman.
That's it. But thank you for recalling that.
Thank you.
Because I looked at that also, I remember that, that was a pretty sticky point. All right, so, we'll move to a public hearing, subdivision site plan applications. We have Amwell Commons RPM Development LLC, File 15 PB09 MSRV SR Block 163 dot oh five, lots 101, 102, 103, 104, and 105, formerly known as Block 163, Lot 12, 11, 10, 9, and 8 of 495 Amwell Road, Lot 101. Q Farm, Amwell Road Lot 102, 503 Amwell Road Lot 103, 505 Amwell Road Lot 104, and 507 Amwell Road Lot 105. Applicant is requesting an additional 120 days to perfect, perfect subdivision to amend condition of approval of resolution dated July 9th of 2015 pertaining to the demolition of existing structures and to amend to facade of Building A by moving two doors to the back of the building on property in the ARW Amwell Road West Zone District in the new Amwell redevelopment area. That's one long introduction.
Thank you, Chairman of the Board and members of the Board. My name is Mike O'Grodnick. I'm an attorney, I'm Oro Savo Cameron and Grant in Shock, and I represent the applicant RPM Development LLC. One thing to note for the record, since there is already an Amwell Commons in the town, we've been requested to change the name of this product, and it's now going to be Westering Place.
Westering Place.
Westering Place. Tonight, I have two witnesses. I have Mr. Brendan McBride, who testified back in June. He is the Vice President of RPM Development, and I also have Alex Merlucci, who is our architect, in compliance with the municipal land use law of the state of New Jersey as adopted, notice has been properly served via certified mail to the property owners and publication in the Beacon, and several affidavits and supplemental affidavits have been submitted to the Board with respect to the public notice.
Let me address that item, Mr. Chairman, for the Board's edification. An issue came to my attention this morning from the planning department regarding the notice of one of the parties in question out of 180 notices. I will indicate that after conversations with Mr. O'Grodnick, review of material submitted, the original is now in Mr. Maskey's possession, it was determined that the individual was noticed at the address in Hillsborough versus the owner's, at least the owner of record at the time's address in Flemington, and in fact, subsequent to that, a deed has been provided which indicates that the property owner sold the property to his daughter and son-in-law who are residing at the Amwell Road residence in Hillsborough, and indicated that he had in fact received the notice at the Amwell Road address and turned it over to, and they are not objecting to same, so adequate notice has been provided on all parties.
Okay, thank you.
On June 25th, 2015, this Board approved the subject application to construct 54 units of affordable housing rental apartments in compliance with the township's housing and fair share plan. The resolution was memorialized via an adoption on July 9, 2015. This property is 20.909 acres along the northerly side of Amwell Road, County Route 514. The site is situated in the new Amwell Redevelopment Area Zone District, as mentioned, and currently contains four residential structures, all of which are proposed to be demolished to allow for the construction of the two buildings. Properties to the north contain residential apartment development, while the properties to the west and across Amwell Road to the south are located in the HOO Home Occupation Office Zone and contain single-family residential dwellings. The adjacent parcel to the east, also located in the HOO Zone, contains medical office buildings and associated parking. A tributary to the Royce Brook is located near the northerly property line and in the flood hazard area. Freshwater wetlands and wetlands transition areas are present on the rear portion of the tract, however, this application does not propose to disturb any of the environmentally sensitive areas. The approval granted and memorialized in July permits a minor subdivision which will consolidate the five existing lots comprising of the subject tract and to subdivide the consolidated property into two lots. Proposed Lot 101.01 will have frontage along Amwell Road and will consist of 3.74 acres. Proposed Lot 101.02, which will be the rear portion, the northerly portion of the property, will consist of 17.16 acres and is not proposed to be improved at this time. Access to the landlocked rear lot will be provided via 50 foot wide access easement extending through the front lot of Amwell Road. The approval permits constructions of two, two-story apartment buildings with a total of 54 dwelling units on proposed Lot 101.01. The proposed building in the westerly portion of the site will contain 26 apartment units as well as a 2,027 square foot first floor community room and management office, while the second building in the easterly portion of the site will contain 28 apartment units. Both will contain a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom apartments, and 14 of the two-bedroom units will be allocated for special needs alternate living arrangement facilities housing. The site will be serviced by a 100-space parking lot, access to which is proposed via a paved, full movement ingress egress driveway extending from the northerly side of Amwell Road. The ingress egress driveway will coincide with the access easement dedicated to new Lot 101.02 to the north, that being the rear lot. Stormwater management improvements will include porous pavement paving, underground detention basement, and a manufactured water quality treatment structure. Apartment buildings will be serviced by the existing utility mains within Amwell Road. Concrete walkways will be constructed throughout the site to provide access with, between the, in the parking area and the houses and the apartment units, and landscape and lighting improvements are also proposed as part of this application. In the original application, there was a single variance, a C bulk variance that was required for minimum, minimum front lot frontage on the back lot because it doesn't front a road. The purpose of this application is twofold. Number one, we're requesting an extension to May 28th, 2016, to perfect the subdivision, and B, we're asking to permit the perfection of the subdivision prior to the demolition of the four structures that are currently required by resolution. We ask that the Board allow us to do that, it's for financing reasons, and my, and my witness will explain the rationale why we need to have the subdivision done before we demo all the buildings. We propose that the demolition would be completed within 90 days of the filing of the subdivision deeds. Secondly, we have also requested a minor change of the facade of Building A, basically moving an exit door and a maintenance storage door to the back rear of the building for aesthetic and for just logical reasons, we, it doesn't make sense to have it where we're not going to get it, not going to have access to it. I've submitted a brief addressing the legal issues, and just briefly, the MLUL generally provides for a two-year extension for these types of approvals, and there's also provision for a one additional year extension, so we're, we're just asking for some timing changes and an additional couple of months to get this all rolling. This is a property that, this is an app, a project that's heavily contingent on funding, and although we got the approvals back in June as, as memorialized in resolution in July 9th, the funding didn't come about, the actual funding didn't reach us until November of this year, which has kind of slowed down everything. Unless there's any other legal questions, I'd like to introduce Brendan McBride, who's been previously sworn in. Okay.
Raise your right hand. Testimony, you're about to give the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God? Do you have to respond yes or no?
Yes.
Indicate your first-
I almost said I do.
First name and last name, and spell your last name for the record.
Sure, Brendan McBride, B-R-E-N-D-A-N, McBride, M-C capital B-R-I-D-E. Okay, Mr. McBride, can you just explain what the applicant has done since we got the approvals back in June to further this application, this development? Yes, so, in, in July of this year, shortly after we submitted the application and came before this Board for approvals, we, we submitted an application to the State Housing Mortgage Finance Agency for the majority of the funding to build this development, and it's a competitive process in which we compete with projects in towns across the state, and a limited number of projects are awarded funding. In November, we learned that we had received funding from the HMFA and, which came in the form primarily of 9% low-income housing tax credits, the equity from which we used to fund and build the project. And we are now putting into motion everything that needs to happen to get to the actual construction start date. Given the fact that we've only gotten approvals from the state and the funding in November, it's a fairly short timeline. For that reason, we haven't gotten to the point of being able to start the process of perfecting the subdivision. The property is currently owned by someone other than RPM, a landowner from whom we're purchasing the property. And basically, the rationale for, for subdividing first and then demolishing after is that the property is owned by someone else. He doesn't want us demolishing the structures on his property before we purchase it, for a good reason, and at the same time, our investors don't want us spending funds to demolish properties on, demolish houses on a property that we do not yet own ourselves. So, we're just looking to sort of realign the timeline so that we can demolish the properties once we own them, and then commence construction as soon as we've secured construction approvals. Counselor? Could you share them, or the mic, I can't pick it up there. Sure. Or use the second mic, Mr. McBride.
Right on. Right next to you.
Could you talk about the tenants on the site? We had, when we came before the Board, we had indicated that there were tenants in the residential structures. Can you update the Board as to the status of the tenancies?
Yes, so there are four, four structures on the property. One was badly damaged in a fire, and two had tenants that were living there. Both tenants have left the premises and found other places to live, and so, all of the dwellings are now vacant, and once we can move forward with the process of, of getting demolition permits and close on the property, we'll demolish them.
I have no further questions for this witness.
Any questions from the Board?
Mr. McBride, January 22nd, letter had a tenant that was to move out in early January but still in possession. Is that tenant gone?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, for the record, how many, do you, how many properties are you yet to own of the, of the group that you're looking for? So, could you repeat the question? I think there was four properties, correct, that you're purchasing? Yeah, I mean, it's all- Tulsa, do you own any of those four yet, or are they? No, we don't. So, there, the, the, there are, I believe, five tax lots that were all consolidated, I believe, to a single entity, and we'll be purchasing a portion of those five tax lots, a subdivided portion from that entity. Just for the record, you don't own anything at this point? We don't own anything yet. Correct. Just, just under contract for, for the purchase. Anything else?
Um, just, yeah, just for my clarification, because I just want to remember the sequence of events, because I remember you came with the, in front of the Environmental Commission, but you hadn't owned the land yet.
Correct.
So, you were gonna, once you purchased it, then you were gonna conduct an environmental impact statement. Do I remember right, or?
No, I, if I recall correctly, we, we did the environmental analysis before appearing before the Board.
Yeah, I don't think you were able to do that only because you didn't own the property, but, I mean, you do, you did your due diligence for, you know, to review the environmental impacts, but you hadn't purchased the property until you were gonna do, once you purchased it, then you were gonna do additional due diligence because you didn't own the property. Was that?
Well, at the point, I think shortly before the hearings, we, we had a consultant that finalized the Phase 1 environmental assessment at that point.
Okay.
And we've done additional investigations of the houses. I don't honestly recall whether there were further aspects of an environmental impact statement that needed to be completed. I'd have to check my notes from back then.
I guess my only question was, was like, anything changed between then and now?
No. No, 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 not at all.
Okay.
No, it's, the situation is exactly the same as it was before.
Okay. So, just from a timing perspective, so I know you're, you're seeking a, the extension through, through May, I guess it is, right? The, you would expect to acquire the properties then and complete the demolition prior to the end of May? Or do the subdivision and do the demolition?
So, the, what we're seeking is a revision to perfect the sub, the subdivision to May 28th, and then, once, once they own it, then they're, then the agreement that we propose is to have it demolished within 90 days of the filing of the subdivision deeds. Or August 28th, 2016.
Yeah, I don't think that's gonna take anywhere-
I just want to extend the time, okay.
Yeah, I don't think it'll take anywhere near that length of time, Mayor. We, we want to move forward as quickly as possible.
Okay. Doctor, with regard to the memo from the Fire Marshal, are we planning to address that next, or?
You can, you can address that.
Yeah, sure, we're, we, we just received some additional comments from him, and we have a construction manager already assigned to the project, so, we're gonna set up a meeting for hopefully next week and sit down with him, make sure that all of his concerns are addressed.
Yeah, I think there was one issue of that access road in the back and how that was gonna be used, and, and the curbing, and-
Right.
I, I don't remember all the details about that, but that's all gonna be addressed.
Yes.
Yeah.
Anything else for this witness? Okay, next one?
Motion open to public.
Motion open to public?
So moved. Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You're it. Okay, any, any questions from the public for this witness on this testimony? Now, just look to this side of the room, because that's the only side the public has. Okay, seeing none? Okay, motion to close?
No.
No?
Next witness.
Next witness, I'm sorry.
I'd like to introduce Alex Merlucci, who's our architect.
Raise your right hand. Testimony, you're about to give the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes.
Can you indicate your first name and last name, spell your last name, sir?
Sure, Alex Merlucci, A-L-E-X-M-E-R-L-U-C-C-I.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Merlucci. Can you please explain to the Board the necessity for the aesthetic changes to the approved resolution?
Are we gonna discuss minimally Mr. Merlucci's qualifications?
Sure, could you please give the benefit of your educational experience?
Sure, I'm a graduate of New Jersey Institute of Technology with a bachelor's degree in architecture. I'm a registered architect in the state of New Jersey and a member of the American Institute of Architects. I represent in Glaze Architecture and Engineering, who is the architect of record for the project.
Will you accept that qualifications? Continue.
Thank you. So, if I could just direct your attention to the presentation area. The minor architectural revisions we are asking for approval on are regarding a set of doors that were previously located on the Amwell frontage in this area. We are relocating them both for aesthetic purposes and functional purposes, so we felt that by taking them from the Amwell frontage and moving them to the parking frontage, it created a more uniform aesthetic along the, the Amwell facade, and it also allowed for easier access to a storage room which one of the doors accesses. We felt that the equipment that used by the maintenance staff and management staff would be better served accessed from the rear of the building at the parking side, as well as the entrance to the community room, which is the second set of doors.
Mr. O'Grodnick, are we having this exhibit marked?
No.
Was, I believe that exhibit was already part of the original.
Correct, this is Exhibit A from the letter provided to the Board.
Okay. Okay.
Will there be revised plans that will show the?
These, this plan was provided in the, in the letter.
But, yes, we will be required to submit a full set of updated plans. We expect some other minor changes when we talk to the Fire Marshal with various site improvements as well, so. Okay, any other questions? I have no further questions from, from the architect. Thank you, Alex. Seems pretty logical. Open to public for the architect?
So moved.
Second? It's all open, so I'll just, any mic coming? Any questions for the architect? Okay, seeing none? Thank you.
Motion to close public.
Motion to close public?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any closing comments, Counselor? No, appreciate your time. We'll certainly-
Mr. O'Grodnick, is your, is your client willing to agree to a couple of items? One is a condition that the provision to require demolition of the dwellings will be within 90 days following the applicant's acquisition of title or August 28th, 2016, whichever is earlier?
Yes, we do. We actually had framed that for when we filed the deeds.
I'm just indicating, it's a purpose of the condition. I would also indicate another condition is any and all taxes underneath all the lots for first quarter 2016 must be paid prior to the adoption of the resolution memorializing this matter. Is there a problem with that condition?
No, sir, certainly.
And that you will comply with any and all requirements pursuant to Mr. Wininger's fire report?
Yes, we do.
And any and all other, I don't believe there was either from Mr. Maskey or from Mr. White on this matter, but?
Yes, we, as part of, of one of the conditions of the resolution, will comply with all, all the comments.
Thank you, Mr. O'Grodnick. Chairman?
Thank you, Eric. Any conversation or thoughts from the Board? Okay, motion to approve?
I'll move, File 15 PB09 MSRV slash SR.
Second?
I'll second with all the provisions Mr. Bernstein noted.
Roll call.
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Hestad?
Yes.
Mr. Julian?
Yes.
Mr. Canard?
Yes.
Mr. Searachy?
Yes.
Mr. Delcor?
Yes.
Dr. Maruli?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Chairman Lepanti?
Yes.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, quick question. Did any one, did any of the members receive the January 7th, 2016 reorganization minutes? Okay. All right, we'll have that to you. Mr. Chairman, I don't believe that Mr. Maskey can correct me that there is anything on the agenda for next Thursday night, therefore- Therefore, assuming that the Board can cancel the meeting, but it will need the February 25th meeting for the Capitol Planning Presentation.
We're okay with that? Do we need to make a motion?
Motion to cancel.
All right, motion to counsel, cancel the February 11th meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Oh, do we need a roll call now? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so it's canceled, uh, so therefore, the next meeting is the business meeting for the, uh, planning board, and then so the next public meeting would be then March 3rd, correct?
March 3rd, which, at presently, there's no agenda beyond the 25th of February, so we will keep you up to date.
Be advised on that.
Yes, uh, just one comment, if I may, on the February 25th, just to clarify that meeting, uh, the Capitol Pla- those of you who have been on the Board before, the Capitol Planning Committee has met twice, they, uh, once or twice. They will meeting, be meeting again on February 8th, which is Monday. They will prioritize the various Capitol projects that have been proposed by the departments. Uh, that package, uh, actually, in your packet tonight, you may already have the project descriptions, I believe, okay? So you have plenty of time to go over them. Before the 25th, you'll also have the recommendations of the Capitol Plan Committee.
And there may, Mr. Chairman, there may also be one or more resolutions, uh, on the agenda for the 25th as well. We are currently working on a couple, and there may be some, so.
Okay. So I don't have anything else, I believe, to see here.